I'm going to call the meeting, uh, to order today. Uh, we have, uh, two things we have to do to take care of this, uh, meeting. And, um, first of all, I want to thank the commissioners for having me here to do this. Being the county clerk of the county is my first, uh, first time doing that. So it's a pleasure and an honor. And I want to thank Ms. Schul for helping me with some of the documents and documentation that I needed. Uh, so the first, uh, order of business is to elect, uh, president of the county commission. So I will open up the floor for a nomination.
Mr. Petrusen, it's an honor to have you with us.
Amen.
Even behind the desk or in front of the desk.
Right here, sir.
But, uh, I would like to, uh, make a motion to, uh, uh, elect, uh, James P. Whitaker as president of the county commission for 2024.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Barnhart. We have a motion on the floor by, uh, Commissioner Barnhart to elect James J. Whitaker as president of the, uh, county commission for the year 2024. Uh, is there a second?
Yes, sir, I'll second him.
We have a second by Commissioner Gogenauer. Is there any further discussion, uh, amongst the commission? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Move on to the election of the vice president of, uh, county commission. Uh, we'll follow the same format. Nomination for vice president of the county commission for 2024.
I would like to, uh, move that we, uh, have it, Commissioner Gogenauer serving that capacity again for 2024.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Mr., or Commissioner Catlett. Uh, Commissioner Gogenauer be the vice president for 2024. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Commissioner Boyd. Any further discussion amongst the commission? If not, take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Things opposed? Motion carried. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Sir. Any items from the public? Where I'm in now? Okay, we'll do that. First of all, we have the...
Want me to come around the front?
Yeah. We'll do it photo work.
Got to make it, keep the cameraman.
What's my face? Are you up here?
I only have a face for radio, so I don't know how this is going to work out.
It's good. You tell me where you want it.
That's cool. That's right there. That's good.
Please, right hand. Aye.
Aye.
Your name?
James P. Whitaker.
Do solemnly swear affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of West Virginia.
And the Constitution of the state of West Virginia.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of president of the Berkeley County Commission.
Of the office of president of Berkeley County Commission.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. What I'll do, I'll sign my, take it back and record it. Sounds good.
That's my feet. All righty. Get that from, get that from Terry.
Yeah.
Yep. A little bit over this way.
Aye.
Aye, Commissioner Gogenauer.
Do solemnly swear affirm.
Do solemnly swear affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of West Virginia.
And the Constitution of the state of West Virginia.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of vice president of the Berkeley County Commission.
Of the office of vice president of Berkeley County Commission.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Yeah. I didn't take your pen. It was still there, isn't it?
Congratulations.
Make me proud. Okay. All right. Thanks, Joseph.
Thank you.
We're ready?
Ready.
Uh...
Done?
Okay.
All righty. Thank you, Tony. Greatly appreciated. Um, again, thank you all for, for your confidence in me to, to lead this illustrious group, uh, for one more year. And, uh, I'm very proud to, uh, to be part of all of you all here today. Thank you.
Well, you've done a good job, Mr. President, so thank you.
Thank you. All righty. Uh, we have, um, any items from the public? Now, is there time to speak? If not, then I'd like to approve the agenda. If there's no modifications or changes. A motion to approve?
Yes, a motion to approve the agenda for January 4th, 2024.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Internal budget revisions. We don't have any this week. We have a few change in statuses, uh, change in status received from the Honorable Larry Hess, assessor for the following employees. They are receiving an increase due to learning GIS mapping effective January 1, 2024. Hannah Pickings' salary will go from $50,729 to $55,729. Sarah Beam's salary will go from $50,729 to $53,729. Change in status received from Mike Lang, chief court martial for Donald Devine. He is receiving an increase due to years of service. His salary will go from $40,678 to $43,118, and that is effective on January the 7th, 2024. Change in status received from the Honorable Sheriff Tom Young for, uh, Adam Leonard, who is receiving a step increase due to years of service. His salary will go from $69,045 to $71,115, effective January the 31st, 2024. And we have a letter of resignation received from the assessor's office for Mary Ann Jacobs, effective December the 31st, 2023. Letter of resignation received from the county clerk's office for Stephen Smith, and that is effective January the 5th, 2024. Uh, per prosecuting attorney, removal of Haley Pacchio, uh, from payroll effective December the 28th, 2023. Had a letter of resignation received from the sheriff's office for Charles Hess, effective December the 30th, 2023. And that looks like that's it. Do we have a, uh, let's see, motion to approve the minutes, uh, December the 4th, 2023. Everyone was present, so we can actually leave those in. Uh, we have a bond reduction, Spring Mills Apartments, Phase 3, BCP file number 2306-223, and it's tied to 2306-211, uh, to 2102-043, and 2110 to 0212. Grading bond number 100618528, and the engineering department has made that recommend- recommendation. Have a bond release from Liberty Run, Phase 2, BCP file 84-05, bond number 10487083, and the engineering department's made that recommendation. Have a bond reduction request for Mid-Atlantic I-81 Logistics, uh, Park Lot 2, BCP file number 2303-118, tied to 2105-0311, and the grading bond number is K40302244. Uh, that was of the Chubb Group Insurance Companies. And there's any questions on those for Doug, on those bond releases and reductions? If not, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sure, moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. And we have no correction of assessments from the assessor? We'll go right into board and meeting reports. Uh, Mr. Mr. Boyd?
Nah, don't have anything from the holiday.
Okay. Mr. Barnhart?
I had a nice holiday, but I got nothing else.
Okay. Mr. Catlett?
No, no board meeting so this past week or so.
How about that? Eddie, do you?
How y'all do that?
We know how to pick 'em.
Yeah. Okay, I, I hear you.
Uh, planning commission, uh, met Tuesday evening, and, uh, it was a more discussion over parking, uh, situation on a, uh, warehouse that's being almost like a multi-use warehouse. But, um, they were able to reach an agreement with, uh, engineering and planning, so, uh, some areas that weren't being utilized, that could have been utilized. So that was, it took up quite a bit of conversation, quite honestly. But other than that, it was somewhat uneventful. And, uh, Linda Barnhart was nominated once again as the president of the commission, and Tim Lewis as the vice president of the commission, and both of them do an excellent job.
And I had nothing to do with it.
And you had absolutely nothing to do with it. Yes, sir.
And that's probably a good thing. Is that it, Eddie?
Yes, sir.
All righty. So we have a, uh, boarding commission vacancies. We have a reappointment packet received from the following. Eric Brown for the senior services, and his term expires, uh, what had expired at 2023, December 31st. Do we have any, uh...
Mr. President, we'd like to make the motion this time to reappoint Eric Brown to the senior services board.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries.
And, and also, um...
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. Eric Goff's reappointment to the Commission?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Motion carries.
And also Eric Goff to the Planning Commission?
Okay.
And I would lean towards the reappointment of Mr. Smith on the zoning appeal.
Is that a nomination or motion to nominate or motion to appoint him?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay.
Both of those, Eric and Mr. Smith.
Do we need to do one at a time, or can we do them both? We'll do one at a time. We'll do Mr. Smith's first. Motion to reappoint Jeffrey Smith?
Yes, sir. I'll make it. I'll make a motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. Eric Goff's reappointment to the Commission?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. Eric Goff's reappointment to the Commission?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. Eric Goff's reappointment to the Commission?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. And Jennifer Smith for the Roundhouse Authority. Her term expires January 14, 2024.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to point her back to the Roundhouse Authority.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. We have a new application received from Elise Gregory and Patrick Moore for the Berkeley County LEPC. Do you want to bring them in for an interview, or they? And then an application received from Gula Engel for the Senior Services Board. Bring her in also, Trace or Eddie. And now, Eddie, we have an honorary Commissioner with us today.
We do.
And I'll leave that all up to you. All right. Mia.
Really like the name. I got a lot of rage in my hand. Just speak a little louder, Mia.
I am a girlfriend.
Do you swear and affirm?
Do swear and affirm.
That I will uphold the Constitution?
That I will uphold the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
Of the State of West Virginia?
Of the State of West Virginia.
That I will work hard?
That I will work hard.
To fulfill the responsibility?
To fulfill the most responsible.
Of the Office?
Of the Office.
Of honorary Commissioner?
Of honorary Commissioner.
To which I've been appointed.
To which I've been appointed.
Congratulations.
I go to South Middle School, and I am in band. I do jazz band and do pop band. When I get out of high school, I want to be a hairstylist, go to a cosmetic school, maybe business school, so be able to maybe teach in the future, open my own personality.
I sound like?
What instrument do you play?
I play the flute.
I played saxophone, you know? Well, yeah, you guess you would. Baritone saxophone. That was the debut.
Y'all to bring that in, Bill or Jim.
I didn't own it in this school.
You didn't own it? Well, I got one. I'll bring in. You can serenade us one day.
I'm sure it's non-functioning at this point.
It's probably returned to dust.
Him or the saxophone?
Well, I was talking about the saxophone.
So am I.
Oh, my goodness.
As you can see, if there's anything you want to interject, please feel free to throw something at me to get us moving.
All righty. Let's see here. We have a classic cluster, Cassie Custer from Berkeley County Emergency Ambulance Authority, and 911 exonerations for which month? This year, last month?
For the current fiscal year.
For the current fiscal year, okay.
Good morning.
Good morning, Cassie.
So I have, for consideration, a total of 119 exonerations, 105 for approval and 14 for denial. The reason for denials would be simply that they do not carry a primary account, then not allowing them the consideration for the approval to have one of them exonerated for the year. These were due by September 30th, so we're a little bit further behind this year with some of the changes, but we hope to get letters out to everyone to let them know whether they have been approved or denied. Does anyone have any questions?
These weren't for the $25 reduction.
No, so this will remove the full $110 base rate.
The actual whole amount.
Yes.
Now, the 14, most likely that was probably somebody that just, was it a primary residence or could have been a vacation home?
So a lot of the 14, if you look, we do have a breakdown sheet that should have been given in the read ahead. People that likely are outside of our area and do not hold a primary account in the State of West Virginia. So for instance, if they have two of the Riverbend lots that each carry a living unit, they can pay for one of those lots and then require or request the exoneration for the second unit, but because they do not have the primary account, we had to deny them.
Correct. I just want to make sure I was understood.
Yeah.
Cassie, how's that work on the ones that you're doing, you know, over on your reason, vacation property pays primary? Can you explain that to me?
So the vacation pays primary, so the primary account would have had to have been paid prior to September 30th at the base rate amount. Because that primary account was paid, then it assumes the payment on the exonerated account.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the 119 exonerations, or, I'm sorry, back up here a little. The 105?
The 105 approvals, yes.
Approvals.
I would show a move to approve that.
Okay, have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Is this state law that requires that this be?
It is written within our ordinance, yes.
Your ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. And then the denial of the 14? Have a motion for the 14 denials?
Seven.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Is this state law that requires that this be?
It is written within our ordinance, yes.
Your ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. And then the denial of the 14? Have a motion for the 14 denials?
Seven.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sounds like we're getting a crowd outside.
I hear a football team.
Do we have Mr. Lawrenson? We have 22 estates that you're going to present to us today.
That number has inflated to 23.
Okay.
This morning, as I say, we have 23 estates for final or interim settlement for the month of January 2024. All estates proposed for settlement this morning are nearly identical to those found in your read ahead. The only difference between the proposed estates this morning and those in your read ahead is the estate of Arlene Elizabeth Rogers. That estate's co-executors brought forward an affidavit and waiver of final settlement, otherwise known as a short-form settlement, on December 20, 2023. My staff immediately placed the estate on February settlement list, thinking the estate needed to be published in January. That law actually changed in 2023 for short-form settlements. We no longer have to publish those. Theory behind that being that all parties have to sign a short-form settlement, therefore the legal notice requirements are kind of redundant when everybody has to sign anyway. In any event, the error was caught, and the estate of Arlene Elizabeth Rogers was added to January's list for your consideration. Additionally, all other estates proposed for settlement here this morning have been legally or actually noticed of their proposed pending settlement status as prescribed by West Virginia law. Furthermore, my estate, my office has received no notice of objections to date from any interested parties from these estates herein. Lastly, all claims of debt publicly filed against these estates have either been released as paid in part or in full by the creditors themselves, or the estate has been declared insolvent by the personal representatives, meaning that no probate assets remain to pay heirs, beneficiaries, or creditors alike. Without objection from any interested party here in the audience today, I ask this commission's consideration for approval for the 23 estates for final or interim settlement for the month of January 2024.
Okay, you've heard the accounts and the settlements. Do I have a motion to approve the 23 estates?
Sure moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion to have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Motion carries.
It's been a little rough, aren't you, Will?
We're getting there. This is the season.
That it is. All righty. Sounds like the football team's out there, so you want to go grab them and get them in here?
Don't let them tackle you, Gary.
It's going to be a, always had the privilege of reading everybody's name, but you know who I'm going to give it to this year?
Nope. I don't. Who would like it? I'm going to just shake their hand. I figure since you was the MHS graduate, it would be your privilege to be able to do that. I'd get their coach to do it.
Come on in, everybody. Have a seat.
It does, yeah. That's why they won.
I can't imagine having a line like that in front of me, but anyway. I'd like to welcome everybody here this morning, and it's my pleasure or our pleasure to recognize the tremendous work that you all did for Martinsburg High School. I am the Martinsburg graduate up here, so I am happy to.
There's a token in every group.
So I'm very pleased to be here, and also Penny and any other Martinsburg graduates besides you, Daseen. But anyway, on behalf of the commission, it has been a, what, a couple of years since we've done this, and I don't know why, but...
Yeah, where y'all been?
Yeah. But we've been here waiting, but anyway, like I said, it's my pleasure to take this time to honor y'all with the achievement that has just surpassed any other high school in the State of West Virginia.
Another can of Eastern Panhandle whip ass.
That is exactly the needs to be said. But HD, would you like to say anything on behalf of?
I'd just like to congratulate you guys on a good season. You know, you guys play hard, work hard. Hard work comes with big wins and big things, so continue to work hard, strive hard, and work hard in the future will take you in big places, guys.
Mr. Barnhart?
Remember, you're all brothers, and keep that in mind in your future endeavors in life. If one of you needs help, gather around and give him help. That's what it's all about.
Mr. Catlett?
I had the opportunity to win a state championship at Hedgesville High School in 1970, a long time ago in basketball, and it's something that's been with me my whole life, and you never, ever get enough of it. It's a wonderful thing that you'll carry on with the rest of your life, that you were a state champion. I, how many of you were on the team two years ago when you won it last? Several of you, I'm sure. And I didn't expect anything less from you this year with David Walker back as your head coach. I've known Dave for a long time, and he's got to be the best football coach in the history of the State of West Virginia in high school football, no question about it. So you're blessed to have a man of his ability to coach you. I know how hard you work. I played basketball and baseball. I wasn't tough enough to play football, but when I was in college playing basketball, I watched how those football players sacrificed to do what they had to do on the field, and I envy you guys for the hard work that you have displayed in another great championship. That's number 10, is that correct? I think so, so congratulations. And even though I graduated from Hedgesville, I'm proud of any team from Berkeley County that wins a state championship regardless of where you're from, so congratulations, guys. Great job.
Eddie?
Yes, sir. Congratulations. You know, when y'all, back in the old days, you started in August, but you guys don't quit. You are constantly in the weight room. You're constantly improving your skill set, and that's a credit to your coaches and your family's support. You can't do these things, you can't have these accomplishments without your parents or your loved ones taking care of you, the coaches to lead you, and a community to support you. Coach Walker, welcome home. Great job. Welcome home, sir. And I have to ask, because I don't know you, who is Clemente, the Gatorade Player of the Year? Would you please raise your hand? The Gatorade Player of the Year, that's quite an accomplishment.
His older brother had a great game in the old victory at West Virginia University, too, by the way.
Yes, he did.
And his older brother, two years ago, when they won the state championship, scored eight touchdowns in the same game, and I don't think that record will ever be broken in my mind.
Say, wait, you know, there's lots to be learned when you play ball. It's about teamwork. It's about taking care of one another, and those skills will go on with you in life. There's a lot of life skills that are taught on the football field, and I hope you can carry them on because you've had good leadership. So congratulations, and we're very proud of you.
All righty, well, we're going to come up front, and I'm going to butcher everybody's name that I can when I start reading them off on these certificates. So come on up, everybody. We're going to do a nice, nice walk through the handshake. All right. Come on up. This is our honorary county person. This is Mia, and she's going to be up here with us today. You all said napalatic water, aren't you?
Hey, we've got several of them around here today. You're probably called a few names.
Coach, I'll get you to help me there.
I will.
Is it, name Alra? Coach with that one?
It's not, he's not here.
Make sure I do get that. And I have, yeah. Josh?
Yeah? Congratulations. Did they do that in, hey, did they do that in football and basketball? I used to pitch in basketball at the time, the players would come over and bump the officials with. Did you do that in football, too? I never liked that as an official.
Derek Benedict.
He said you're his favorite flavor.
Nicholas Buskey. Joe Clark.
Perfect comment.
DeJuan Colfield. Sandra Collins. Terrell Colfield. Landon Curry. Brian Dick. Michael Diller. Buzz Dover. Brayden Edwards. Hey, give me that bunk. Coy Fagan. Chad Gideon. Ron Jordan. Jeremy McDonald Gibson. Kingston McDonald Gibson. Jeffrey Brickett. Wes Sampson. This guy here, his grandmother worked for me for 20 years at Parks and Rec. His father's my tennis, and he's going to WVU next year, correct Wes? Going to WVU next year to play. EJ Hendrick. Dante Humphrey. Jeremy Hunter. Aion Jacobs. Peyton Hoffman. Jay Lardy. Gage Blackie. Wyatt Blackie. Cade Marshall.
Jay Michael Marshall.
Izzy Martinez.
Isabel.
Ian McKenzie. Trey Moos. Sarad Musgrove. Did you reserve? Cody Page. Tyson Reeves. Rashad Reed. Matthew. Jeremiah. Santa Maria. Colin Shaker. Marcus Chance. Jase Shipley. Aire Tugwell. Mason. Sinzer Warren. Lady Anne Weller. Dalton Wheeler. Jeremiah White. Alan Todd Williams. Sinzer Yancy. Zerzy Yancy. Okay, guys, I'm gonna butcher not as hard. Jabari Javoa. Coach Walker. Devin Allen.
How tough is he about a minute?
He's tough, alright.
Cedric Brown. Jared Ferguson. Mark Hatch. Kevin James, I went to school with Kevin, he's not here, Kevin and I graduated. Logan James. Chuck Lynch. Marcus Quat, Ostroski. Roy Walker. Cameron Pewsey. Mike Granham. Tim Potts. Jason Vaughn. Bill Harpert. Steven Edman. Colin Under. Randy Brown. Mike Clemente. Terry Cooper. Mark Jenkins. Stacy Callen. Hillary Flosser. Taylor Karla. Gabby Mungo. Aiden Brad. Amelia Frankler. Not least, Colin Nantock. Guys, thank you all so much, ladies and gentlemen. How many of you are teenagers? Quite a bit. How many of you going next year to the next level in play? Okay, that's great. Coach, I'm gonna open up the floor to you if you have anything to say.
Thank you, you guys are a great team, and they've been a strictly hard all year. Overcame some adversity and got comfortable being uncomfortable, and all the things they hear me preach at the end of the day all the time. It's great for the young men, I appreciate it, yeah. Out of your busy schedule, great.
You know, Coach, it's our pleasure. Anybody else wanna say anything? One more round of applause. Yeah, we're gonna get a photo here, we're gonna take a quick break, and we're gonna get a photo. And we're going to get a photo.
Today, we are getting ready to interview a lifelong resident of Berkeley County, who is very instrumental in many things that happened around here. And her dad and her whole family. So it's my honor to ask Jill Burkhardt to come on up and tell us a little bit about yourself that we don't know. And you're just an interview for a candidate for the Airport Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker, members of the commission. Historically, the airport has been very important to our family. Shepherd Field, which was the track of land where the airport is now, belonged to my grandmother, Margaret Shepherd Burkhardt's family. My father and his brother, my uncle Bill, did their training at Shepherd Field, received their pilot's license, and flew quite often from Shepherd. My uncle went on to become a pilot in the civilian air corps during the Burma airlift. He then was employed as a pilot for All American Aviation and flew one of the first airmail routes in the country. He flew in Pennsylvania, West Virginia, and Ohio, which was very rural at the time and did not have a lot of air or even any mail delivery at that point. My father was a very proud member of the Airport Authority. My sister has been a member of the Airport Authority. And I am very anxious to become a member of the Airport Authority if you so see fit for me to be approved. I have worked as a school administrator for 30 years in Washington County, was a member of various boards, committees, and state committees. I've been an adjunct professor of educational leadership at Trinity College in DC, at Hood College in Frederick, at the Hagerstown Community College, and at Shippensburg and Frostburg Universities.
There's one thing you can add to your uncle's accomplishments. I think, if I'm not mistaken, was one of the first airmail pickups by airplane.
That's correct.
He flew by and it was a grapple, I think, that went out that would catch the mailbag and then never stopped flying and just pick it up and kept on going.
Yes, he was flying a Reliant, a Stenson Reliant at the time. Yes. And he worked with.
Norman Rental.
Yeah, Rental. Yes, yes, he did. I also have been employed by the State Treasurer's Office for the past almost 12 years as the Director for the Regional Treasury Division. I work around the state with the regional treasury representatives as well as I work specifically with the seven counties in Eastern Panhandle and the Upper Potomac Islands. So do you have other questions?
Well, we'll start with HD and if he has anything to.
I don't really have any questions. You sound like you're well in tune with what's going on there. And I think you might be a great candidate.
Thank you.
Mr. Barnhart.
Man, I go back to 1972 when I first met your dad and Billy.
Sure. He's my twin brother, by the way.
Used to hang out with Billy in the third floor of the courthouse, the planning commission offices. And of course, President Burkhardt of the county commission, that goes without saying, quite a number of interactions with him. So how's the family?
Everyone's good. My mother's 99.
Oh, God.
She's just getting over COVID. We were able to keep her safe for almost four years. We went to a family wedding thinking it was very safe and she ended up with COVID. But she is doing just fine. It left her with some fatigue, but she's 99 and every day is a gift. So we're very happy.
Hang on to her.
Yes, thank you.
Do you have any plans as an Airport Authority member to. Do you have any plans as an Airport Authority member to improve the airport?
You know, I have to think about that a little bit, but I will tell you that I think that public transportation and any type of transportation is an economic benefit to the community and to the citizens. And I think expanding any type of service and transportation for Berkeley County would be a benefit, including the Airport Authority.
Also, I think education would be a critical item. You know, you've got this wonderful airport, you've got this wonderful school system, put them together.
I'm with you, Mr. Barnhart. And having a background in education, it makes me even more interested in helping to make that a fit.
Well, your wishes are on their way to becoming reality.
Well, I know, but I wanted to emphasize the urgency of-
With Marshall University and their flight program.
And you're doing a flight school, correct?
Yeah, the Marshall is, yeah. Actually, it's a whole program from start to finish. It's through the executive side, through the service side, it's through the maintenance side. We're going to combine with, I think, Shepherd University, there's talks about that, as well as Blue Ridge and Rumsey, so.
Wonderful.
Yeah, it's just, we're working on it due with diligence, that's for sure.
And I work with all those institutions through the State Treasurer's Office, so I'm happy to do whatever I can do if I'm on the authority.
Well, I can tell you a figure that we need.
I'm sorry?
I can tell you a figure that we need out there to make it all happen, but I'll refrain from that from right now.
Okay.
Steve, you have any questions?
No questions. Just, I've known the Burkhardt family forever and great respect for the entire family. Her dad, of course, was on the commission for many years, out there begging for money for Carson Rec. And Billy helped us many times from the airport out there with the different projects. It was unbelievable. But I know she'll be a great representative for that board, and we just appreciate the fact you're willing to serve our communities. Thank you.
Is this a full term or an expired term or what is it?
It's, I don't know what TANIS was. I can't remember whether it's an unexpired term of TANIS right now, so I'll find out.
Okay.
Eddie?
Jill, is there anything that you would like to see this airport doing that it hasn't done? And I ask that because it just seems like we just can't get the traction.
I think there is a need for marketing, and I don't think that probably that's been done quite as much as it should have been, and not through anyone's fault, just because it's very difficult sometimes to promote the marketing and promote the airports. But I think marketing in some different manners may be helpful. I know that Nick has worked really hard to try to do some things, and I think that there are some opportunities that we probably can take advantage of and look at in terms of promoting the airport.
That's all I got. Thank you. There's not a whole lot I can ask that already hasn't been answered, and it's always nice that when you have members of the community that are lifelong members that are still around, that still want to help, and my heartfelt thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we don't usually make appointments or make decisions right now, but we will most certainly be back on the agenda and let you know.
Great. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Give your mom my regards.
Yes.
I certainly will. I'm going there right now.
Okay.
See ya, Anthony.
Okay. Next up, we have a MOU with the Board of Education, Baker Softball Field.
Mr. President, Steve has carried the torch on this and worked with both Anthony and the school board itself to kind of address some issues with pieces of an agreement that did and didn't exist and kind of let Steve address the highlights. But if the commission so sees to approve it and authorize signature, we'll get that baby in the archives, so we'll protect it moving forward.
Okay. Any questions for Steve if you, I mean, you have it here in front of you, you had a chance to look over it. I think it's well reviewed and-
We've made sure that it protected us as a commission.
Yes.
And I think we've done that, accomplished that part of it. It's a wonderful thing because this MOU is going to allow the school board, Board of Education, to invest. They've already invested $50,000 in the parking lot situation. They're going to invest another $250,000 in Baker Field there at the complex, and it's going to take it to a new level. And it's just a win-win for the girls softball league. It's a win-win for the high school. And, you know, we're involved because we own the property, and so it's going to be a great improvement for our properties. So I'm pleased to see it finally get to this point. It's been several months' struggle to get here, but I think all parties are in agreement now with what we have. And by signing this MOU and once all three bodies sign it, they're ready to go out to bid on the actual work to have the field improved.
All righty.
Appreciate your support on it if you so move to, in fact, if you're ready for a motion.
I am ready.
I would like to make that motion that we sign, give our president the authority to sign this MOU that will involve Baker Field. It's really part of the girls softball, and there's P.O. Faulkner's there as well, so it's Charlie Prather Park and P.O. Faulkner. But make that motion that we move forward with this MOU.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries.
Mr. President, Mr. Cal, thanks for your leadership in seeing this through. None, no single entity on their own could make the improvements over there that are needed to be done. But with you being able to bring everybody together, you know, great things have been happening in that arena over there with the baseball field, now with the girls softball field. What a nice complex this is going to be. And thanks for your-
It's going to be something I think we'll all be proud of. That's what we want, and it's best for our community, sir.
All righty. Thank you so much. Did I call for the question? Did I call for the question?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I went back quick.
Got too much fun.
Yeah. All righty. County Commission meeting schedule.
Sir, just a matter of housekeeping to prepare you for all the fun you're going to have in 2024. As you know, and as you'll see in this list, all of the red ones are the 17 holidays that you approved a few meetings back. But this also includes just your schedule for purposes of you and knowing where you'll be and what you're going to need to do. So if the commission so sees fit, if we can get this schedule approved, we'll get all those dates on the books and be ready to go.
Sounds good. Motion to approve the County Commission meeting schedule.
Sir.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Next up, IRS mileage rate.
Yes, sir. We joked earlier, I can still remember back in high school, my dad saying he was done driving cars when gasoline got to 99 cents a gallon. Well, our current reimbursement rate published by the IRS last calendar year was 65.5 cents. They made a modification January 1 and increased it to 67 cents per mile. We don't have a lot of reimbursement because you do have a healthy fleet with plenty of available vehicles, but it happens. So in the event that someone does need to use their personal vehicle, we're asking that if the commission so chooses to approve, to follow the IRS guidelines and make it 67 cents per mile.
I want to make a comment. When I started with the Health Department in November of 1972, the mileage rate was eight cents a mile.
Wouldn't get you very far today, sir.
No.
Might, wouldn't even start your car.
Unless it's a diesel. We don't have many then, what you're saying. It doesn't really get used at all, does it?
It does not.
But we still have to adopt it, so. So can I have a motion to approve the IRS mileage rate?
I'll make a motion to approve the IRS mileage rate.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Board assignments for the County Commission.
Earlier, or I guess mid last month, I sent all of you, not that you aren't familiar with your current boards, but I sent the list of current boards and the boards that you sit on. As you know, every year during this meeting, you kind of evaluate, see if there's any changes. So this is just for purposes of housekeeping, if there's any desire to make any changes to any boards.
I'm happy with my boards.
Go ahead, Steve. You're fine.
HD. Eddie and I talked a little bit, and with Eddie's background and the like I have of the fire board, it's not that I can't learn about it, but I think Eddie's more suited for that. So Eddie's going to assume that board of mine, so.
Are you taking anything in here?
We were talking about it. We might make a change midstream here, so if that's-
Are there historic landmarks that one of you older fellows would like that one?
Oh.
I never seem to make it to that one.
I like that you said "you older fellows."
Historic landmarks.
They included us all, though, in saying that.
Man, I heard a bus coming or something.
I'll keep it if I have to, but.
When's that meet?
On Monday.
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock on Mondays.
That'd be a tough one for me.
Yeah, I already have a meeting on Monday. Two of them.
So just a fire board change?
Yeah, I think so.
Got that one, Penny?
Is that okay? All righty. We don't need a motion. We don't need a motion for that, though. State budget revision, number six, Fund 001.
So this one's, this one's a unique one. We've had an increase in revenue of $966,652. There's some, with some money moved. This covers the transaction for the land acquisition next to the Park in Inwood that happened last week, the week, last week, last week. This also covers a little bit of grant revenue and some fund transfers, and I'll kind of walk you through where these are going. $1,398 are going into the sheriff's tax office. $43,000 is going into state grants. That will be used for the purchase of mobile communication, portable communication radios for your court marshals. A grand of $4,242 will be put into your contingency account. $553,012 will go into the sheriff's law enforcement account, and that is to fund his non-existent holiday pay. If you'll remember, when we started the budget cycle this year, we have tracked it by the penny from July 1. So what I did, just so you know, is I took July 1 to December 31, all of the expenses for holiday pay, and I multiplied it by two, and I added in retirement and FICA. There's more holidays on that end of the schedule than there are on the coming end. It might be off a little bit, but this is in the salary line, and it can't be moved. It's there for a purpose. So we all had the conversation that this needed to be done, so that writes the sheriff's department's holiday pay line item. And then lastly, the $365,000 was the monies transferred to cover the property transaction last week, last month, last month. So all total, $966,652 in and proportionally out in expenditures on the other side.
The closing go as directed?
That's it.
All right.
We have the key and the building is winterized. All the tools were fleshed, water turned off.
RV antifreeze and traps and stuff like that.
Not that far yet, but at least some, it's on the list.
Okay.
Was there any evidence of vandalism or anything?
There was occupied. Someone lived there. Yeah, so we'll put up some good trespassing signs coming soon. But we have the key. That facility's been there, so.
So is it vacant now?
It's vacant now.
So was it a renter or someone who lived, or they lived there?
It was owner. It was an heir, wasn't it? An heir to the original owners?
Yeah.
She lived there, grandmother grew up there, something that's been in the paint.
Long time. All righty. Do I have a motion to approve State Budget Revision 06, Fund 001?
Assume moot.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. We have an executive session today.
Legal matters.
Okay. No items from the public. Any action to be taken coming out?
I'm moved. We are in executive session for-
Legal matter.
Legal matter.
We are in executive session. We are in executive session.
We're out of executive session and no action to be taken. Mr. Barnhart?
Well, I thank you, Mr. Newly-Elected President of the Birthday County Commission for 2024,